Okay. Welcome this evening to the meeting of the Pecosin City Council. If we could all stand, I'll do the invocation, pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for our city, our state, and our nation. Be with those in our city tonight that are grieving for any reason. Be with those that serve for us in foreign lands as representatives of our country. We ask a special blessing on our city this evening, and we ask for a portion of your wisdom as we deliberate the issues of those that we serve. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a host of special presentations that we'd like to get out of the way first. And what we'll do is we will start with, I think, we'll start with Senator Miller, because I know his time is short. Senator Miller, would you please bring this podium? Senators, for those on the viewing audience that may not recognize, it's Senator John Miller, a great advocate for the city of Pecosin. He has served as our state senator the last six years.
Four years.
Four years. And we are thrilled by his representation. You can't ask for a better friend to our city. The issues he represented us on, the communication that we got from him, just a tremendous asset to us. I'll tell you, we're saddened by the redistricting of Virginia in that we will lose Senator Miller, but the state of Virginia will not. So we are thrilled that Senator Miller will continue, and we look forward to continued friendship. John, before we sent you off, we didn't want you to forget Pecosin. So if we could, we'd like to present you with a plaque basically to you in appreciation for your long dedicated service to the city of Pecosin, and we wish you well as you continue your representation of the state.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. And in this business, as you all know, you receive a lot more criticism than you do compliments, and I really appreciate your kind remarks and the sentiments of the council. When I was elected four years ago, the day after the election, I went to two places. At 5:00 in the morning, I went to the shipyard gates and shook hands and said, "Thank you." And at 7:00, I came to Pecosin to McDonald's where there's a group of gentlemen that solve all the world's problems every morning. And I couldn't say thank you because I don't think one of them voted for me, but I did tell them that I was their senator and wanted to work with them, and we have continued to meet at McDonald's quite often for the last three and a half years. So please feel free to call me at any time, although I'm not your official state senator. I'm happy to do whatever I can for you and the people of Pecosin, and thank you very much for this great honor.
Now, if I could, I'd like to get Libby Marks to join me.
Hi.
For those in the viewing audience and those here, this is Libby Marks. She's served us as the part-time library assistant from July 5th of 2005 to July 30th, 2011. We didn't want you to get away from us without a certificate of appreciation for that service to the city of Pecosin and our wish for future love and everything.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And now, I'd like to get Corporal Scott Johnson and Cliff, if you'd join me up here for this one, I would appreciate it. Good. I'm great. This is Corporal Scott Johnson, and the reason he's here tonight is for a very special presentation. It's not often that you get to, in line of police duty, that you get to do something that will probably you'll remember the rest of your life that just wasn't a bad thing. There was an eight-year-old boy that was choking inside of the restaurant, the Subway restaurant. You can imagine, if you're a parent of any child, what that must have felt like, those few minutes, probably stretched to hours, and the panic and everything else. Part of the great thing of Pecosin is that we have police officers that are as well-trained as first responders. I'll tell you, the first person in that restaurant was Corporal Scott Johnson, successfully performed the Heimlich maneuver and saved a young boy's life. And I wanted to recognize that publicly because I just don't think there's a higher calling that we do in the city and the higher calling for the city of Pecosin Police. And we appreciate that.
Thank you, Senator.
We just said a farewell to, let me come back over to my seat, because that'd be easier for you to talk about. We said a fond farewell to Senator John Miller, and we welcome you as our new state senator after the redistricting. And you've got a tremendous city here, we believe, to represent where we are. We really believe in the state. We support the state, and we are very fortunate to have somebody with your representation and your knowledge of state government to now be our state senator. We wanted to invite you here tonight, introduce you to the public as our new state senator, and to give you a few minutes if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. Most of you, I don't know, Councilman Green and I go back a fair number of years. We both happen to have disbehaved in our youth, and our parents sent us to the VMI. Fortunately, buddies, but hey, you proved my mind has not. Actually, you should have extended a genuine thank you to Senator Miller as he moves out of the district because he and his majority party were kind enough to redraw the third senate for the district that has put me in your community. So actually, I thank John for that opportunity. I'm not totally unfamiliar with Pecosin. Actually, my first exposure to Pecosin goes back to the Doyle Island days when I was in high school in Williamsburg. He used to come down here and play sports in Pecosin. Got a lot of very interesting times down here. Actually, I've been some property down here in Pecosin probably for about 20 years. It's a real privilege when we have the opportunity to represent you. I think you'll find that I'm a very different personality. I've had the privilege of being in the senate for June for 20 years. I've been the majority leader, I've been the minority leader, and I prefer the former to the latter, continuing to work in that regard. I take the legislative responsibilities that I have very serious. I think anybody that has followed my career knows that I am more of a pragmatist than a partisan. Back me into a corner, I will become partisan, but that's not my first privilege at all. I'm very much about trying to get things accomplished. If you would look back over my track record, you would see over the last 10 years that I have been rated either number one or as low as number three most effective legislator I've ever been before you can project. Now, I don't say that to be a bracket. I say it because I'm just very much about getting things done. And at the end of the day, I really don't care what the combination of the vote is if I can advocate and move the legislature in general. So I'm looking forward to working with you all. I think you'll find that both myself and my staff are very accessible. We try to be very responsive, and we try to get things accomplished. I'm looking forward to learning the issues important in Pecosin, if not my friend Wayne Moore. Make sure that, he does tell me, I'll point that I go back many, many years. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity and getting to know each other, and be happy to answer your questions. I wish you luck.
Anybody have any questions?
Senator, you opened the door. We do have some legislative concerns, and we will be talking to you in the conference.
Imagine that. Imagine.
None of it has anything to do with the EPA and Chesapeake.
Or the schools.
68 miles of shoreline, and you know, 58, 500 minutes, 15.6 square miles.
Yes, sir. So we will be talking to you, and we're just looking forward to working with you. And again, we appreciate you taking the time to come here this evening and introduce yourself.
Thanks for having me, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. Okay. And one new employee, right?
Two new employees to introduce, members of council this evening. I am very glad to introduce these two gentlemen to you. Both of you would come forward, Mr. David Dixon and T.J. Farrington, both police officers newly minted with the city, and I provide them an opportunity to introduce themselves to you. Gentlemen, whichever one of you would like the floor first, please just introduce yourselves. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
How you doing? I'm David Dixon from Hampton, Virginia. Started here July 8th. I'm coming from Hampton University Police. Stayed there about a year formally before that. I worked at Hampton Sheriff's Office for about 14 years. I look forward to serving the city of Pecosin, and thank you for this opportunity.
Look forward to having you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is T.J. Farrington. I'm a Pecosin native. I grew up here, graduated high school here, and married with a beautiful wife with a baby on the way, live here now currently in the city. And it's my honor to, you know, keep the city, protect and serve as when I grew up, running around these streets and riding my bike and up and down the sidewalks, I had it safe and I was secure. And I feel like it's my duty, and I thank Chief Bowen for allowing me the opportunity to give back what I had when I grew up here. And I just thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Now, to the portion of the audience for visitors, anybody that would like to address council and the audience on any subject, now is that time. Okay. Seeing none, we move forward to the approval of the minutes. We have a regular session and a work session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a regular session minutes of June 27, 2011.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, Judy, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
Thank you very much. And a motion on the work session.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 27, 2011 work session.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Abstain.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero with one abstention.
Okay, thank you very much, Judy. All right, now moving forward to a public hearing. This would be a public hearing on an ordinance amending the sign ordinance by revising Section 3, and this would be the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this ordinance amendment would make certain changes to the sign ordinance pertaining to our central business district. It's been to the planning commission and comes to you as a 5-0 recommendation from them. Sherri Coffey will present for staff to see. Good evening, Sherri.
Hello. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, we are presenting to you this evening Planning Commission's ordinances changes to the city code under Appendix D, Sign Ordinance, Section 3D1, Paragraphs 1A, B, and C pertaining to height and quantity of freestanding monument signage serving our business community. The first one, Section 3D1, Paragraph 1A, the existing provision limits one monument sign per lot or parcel. The proposed provision allows businesses on corner lots, parcels fronting on two streets with driveway entrances on each street, the option of having a monument sign on each street. Purpose of the change enhances exposure and identification of business on corner lots, which would benefit the Wachovia Building because they have an entrance on Worth Creek Road and Victory Boulevard. Next paragraph, Section 3D1, Paragraph 1B, existing provision establishes the allowable aggregate area of a sign face based on the lineal width of building frontage. No maximum sign noted in the provision. Proposed provision adds language from Section 3D1, 1C, limiting the maximum aggregate area of a sign face to 40 square feet. The purpose of the change consolidates square footage requirements into one code section for ease of interpretation. Section 3D1, Paragraph 1C, existing provision limits the overall height of a sign and supporting structure to four feet above natural grade and establishes a maximum aggregate area of 40 square feet. Proposed provision increases the overall height of monument signs to six feet above natural grade and specifies that the overall height of the sign can measure no taller than four feet above the base of the sign, and the base can measure no taller than two feet above natural grade. The existing maximum square footage language in this provision has been relocated to Section 3D1, 1B as noted above. The purpose of the change enhances the appearance of signs by allowing a slight increase in overall height to accommodate an attractive mortar base without compromising allowable sign face area. An example would be the McDonald's sign that is hidden by the shrubbery. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do I have any questions? Okay. And this is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody who would like to discuss or make comment on this ordinance. Okay, seeing none, and recognizing that this is a first reading, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the sign ordinance by revising Section 3 for limited signs.
Seconded, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion made and seconded. Any comments or discussion before we take a vote? Okay, seeing none, Judy.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll see this at the next meeting for final adoption. All right, first item under new business, this is a resolution approving the performance contract for the Colonial Behavioral Health.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may recall this is a recurring annual item. The arrangement that we have with the state is such that each year you must consider and ultimately approve or accept the performance contract. You do not have the ability to modify it. However, Mr. Coe is here, David Coe, the executive director. He'll talk, I'm sure he'll answer any questions you may have pertaining to the agreement, but I'm sure that he would, if given an opportunity, like spend a minute or two just telling our citizens, reminding them some of the things that they do to assist our citizens.
I'd love to hear that. Welcome, David.
Thank you. I didn't hear your last comments, Mr. Wheeler.
I said, "Was, in addition to explaining the contract, I'm sure you wouldn't mind two minutes to do an infomercial for our citizens to the types of things that you do for them."
The only hard part will be two minutes. Colonial Behavioral Health is your Community Services Board, public agency providing mental health, intellectual and developmental disability services, and services to individuals with substance use disorders. We are, in 2011, this is our 40th year of operation, and we are pleased that you'll be getting invitations to an anniversary event in the month of September. In the past three years, we have increased the number of individuals served. While our budget has not increased, we have increased from just a little over 3,400 people served per year. This past year, we were just over 4,500. That's with no increase in funding at the aggregate level. We are thrilled with the support that we've gotten from the city of Pecosin. We enjoyed meeting with four of you in our Grafton office last week, and we thoroughly enjoyed that and want to continue that on an annual basis. Most services provided to Pecosin are provided in our Grafton office at 3804 George Washington Highway, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to ask, answer those rather than continue the infomercial.
Questions?
Have you seen an increase in Pecosin residents going to your facility?
We have seen an increase. It's been, it's fluctuated somewhat, but it's been gradual. The largest increase has been in the number of children seen, where that increase, the number was small. It was a couple of years ago, like 52. This past year, we were at 69 children from Pecosin being served. That is our fastest growing population across the board in all four jurisdictions that we serve, is children.
Can you explain what they're being seen for?
Any number of things. They may have autism, some form of intellectual disability, many children with emotional disorders. It's a significant event. This was not a Pecosin resident, but we recently had a four-year-old child that had to be psychiatrically hospitalized for the second time. You wouldn't think that these things would happen with young children, but they do. Individuals, teenagers with substance use disorders. It's a wide range. There's a number of children that will be dealing with some adjustment issues with parents who are overseas in the military. If you name an issue, we've probably seen it in the last year.
So when you see children with special needs, you contract up for these services in a lot of cases, or no?
We contract out services from birth to age three with Child Development Resources, or CDR. From age three up through their, through school age, we actually see those children ourselves.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Dave. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, everybody prepared to make a motion? Adopt the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the FY 2012 performance contract for Colonial Behavioral Health.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. I don't see any discussion coming on this treaty. Would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Great.
I was just going to say that four of us that attended the luncheon and briefing, Bud, Tracy, and Carrie and I, David did an excellent job laying out all of the services and the conditions that they treat, and it was a real eye-opener, I can say that, so we certainly appreciated that. Thank you.
Additionally, what they do with the budget that they have was just truly impressive as well.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is a resolution directing that public notice be given of council's intent to receive bids and lease and option to purchase publicly owned property at Mesa Point.
Mr. Mayor, beyond that, I would simply note to those that may be watching at home, the area that we're talking about is the area that is generally between the restrooms and Diggs property on the side with the pier. It's that portion there, and if you approve this, then the next item would be to formally open it the evening of August 22nd at 7:00. And the requirements for the bidding are found in the package, and if anyone has any questions on what is required specifically, we would be pleased to help them in our office if they just give us a call at 868-3000.
Okay. Everybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the resolution for the council of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, directing that public notice be given of the council's intention to receive bids for the lease and/or purchase of publicly owned property located at Mesa Point.
Second. Yeah, motion made and seconded. Comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, Judy.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. And next is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a hauler agreement with the Hampton Steam Plant.
Mr. Mayor, this is an update of our existing agreement with the city of Hampton. Most importantly, for the purposes of this update, the tipping fee remains unchanged at $34. Mr. Jones is here to answer any questions he may have, additional statements he may have to tell you.
No, it's just, you know, just a reearner. We need to, you know, look at it a little bit better, and I think that, you know, this is a good thing, keeping the same price. It's the same price it was last year, and I think we're going to go into like a five-year deal, no more than five years. I think it's a good thing. I can answer any questions that you may have. It's currently at $34 a ton. It's not going to go up this year, and it's kind of a year-by-year thing, so I think we're good.
Okay.
So the price is not the same for five years then? There's always the possibility of it going up next year or the year after?
That's my understanding. I think we can't. And, you know, we use that, we don't use that facility as much for our debris haul and stuff. It's more for the trash. But we do use it when the other pit goes down or something, we do utilize that.
Okay. Everybody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a hauler agreement with the city of Hampton Steam Plant.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Not Judy, please call the roll.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. And last item under new business this evening is a resolution requesting the General Assembly to reverse the $60 million a year aid to localities.
It doesn't, it's not, it just doesn't read exactly right for what this is. Randy, would you explain what this is?
I would be pleased to. This is a follow-up item, Mr. Mayor, you'll recall from your recent retreat on budget. As the state began to deal with recession, as it began to impact its budget, one of its budget balancers was something called local aid to state. And we have other names for it, but they're not fit for mixed company. Essentially, what this means is from the declining amount of money the state is providing to support city and municipal county operations across Virginia, there is a formula, and the end product of that formula is, is we have to write a check back to the state. So the amount of money that we essentially rebate the state back from, with, from among their allocation to us that's coming here is $42,000. And that's teacher, that's police officer, and those revenues are declining to begin with. What this resolution does, and it's brought to you by Baco and VML, and is part of a statewide effort to focus on this issue, which is, first, they're asking the governor to submit an amendment to the 2012 budget, when he prepares that in December, that would eliminate this for 2012. And also, that in the preparation of the fiscal year 13 and 14 budget, which is also prepared at the same time, that this practice be eliminated. prepared at the same time, that this practice be eliminated. The first section speaks and asks that of the governor. The second section of the resolution asks for our General Assembly members to get behind this effort as well. The immediate impact for us would be to keep $42,000 of the dwindling amount of state support we're getting to support our operation.
Much better than it reads, because it sounds like they're actually giving us aid when you read the resolution. But what they're really doing is we're writing them a check.
Yes. Got it.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend adoption of a resolution requesting members of the General Assembly support a budget amendment to reverse the $60 million a year aid to localities reduction for the current year FY 12 and to eliminate the reduction in the budget submitted for FY 13 and 14.
Seconded. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any other comments?
I would like to add to that motion that we staple a copy of this to the check with lots of staples.
Most of this money that we send to the state is the services that we share with York County. Is that correct?
It comes from all sorts, types of sources. It comes from 599 money and library money and constitutional officer money and registrar money. They take all of the money that we get and then apply a factor to it. So to the extent that there is money we get from, that we get from York County services, it would count there. But if York gets it directly, it wouldn't count in our percentage.
Okay. Questions? All right, Judy, please.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, rolling right along here. Let's see if we can keep it going here with the comments of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I have one and a half comments. I simply want to take a moment and commend Tom Jones and Charlie Bird. Councilmembers, if you've seen our new sign coming in from the Hampton side, it's the one with the community seals on it, the community groups. Charlie and Tom have cleaned those seals as best they could, removed the ones that are completely unreadable. We're looking for new ones, community group members. And they've constructed a brand-new sign, looks fantastic, and we've mounted the Pecosa High School sports sign to it. There's another sign coming very similar to it on With Creek, and that's item one and half item. Mrs. Crawford, your suggestion about the Virginia's best affordable suburb, we're actually making signs that will hang with eye bolts from our welcome signs, which will have that message, but because we'll do it with eye bolts, we'll also be able to use other messages like "Welcome to Seaford Festival Weekend," and that sort of thing. So thank you for this suggestion, and that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, you want to start us off this evening?
Yeah, I got a couple of attaboys and one oops. The attaboys, first of all, the treasurer's office. If you notice the attachment at the bottom of the last utility bill, it's now possible to set up a debit for your utility service. That's a real convenience. You know, people don't have to write checks, drop them off, or mail them in, so that's a good convenience. The second thing, the economic development website, very well done. Commended folks that put that together. It's very nice. And a little problem, we had a little problem with the trash pickup in the Western Precinct this morning. I just put mine out, and I came back in and heard the truck coming, and it was 10 till 7:00. And because we typically don't get the pickup until late afternoon, about half of our folks didn't have it out. So I called Public Works to let them know it could be a problem, but I was too late. They had already received several complaints, and the truck came back around again. But I guess it's two things to be learned. One, they shouldn't start early, and second, we ought to have it out by 7:00.
If I could be so bold, perhaps the third thing is, if you've got a problem, call us immediately, and we'll deal with it the best we can. Thank you, Tom.
They certainly did. They're good.
Okay, ready?
Just to say that welcome to our new employees, and I attended the HRTPO in your stead this past Thursday, and about the only thing that came out of it is there are going to be tolls on the Norfolk tunnels, which shouldn't affect us a whole lot.
So we sent you one time, and there's going to be tolls on the Norfolk tunnel?
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, Bud. One vote's all I get.
Thank you. Thank you for attending that as I was --
No tolls on the New Bridge, right?
No. Okay. Thank you for attending that, buddy, as I was in Washington on other business, but I appreciate that. And Frank?
Nothing, sir.
Buddy? I mean Bud.
I'd like to thank Olivia Marks for her service, and again, my personal congratulations to Corporal Scott Johnson for his excellent efforts in saving that young boy, and welcome Officers Dickerson and Farrington to our fine city. And also, thanks Senator Miller for his service, and welcome Senator Tommy Norman to Pecosa.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing that hasn't already been said. Thank you.
Okay. And in hopes to keep it brief, I'm going to, I don't have any comments tonight other